Good evening. This regular meeting of the Mesquite ISD Board of Trustees is called to order. A quorum is present and notice of the meeting has been posted for the time and manner required by law. At this time, the Board of Trustees will move into a closed meeting under Texas Government Code Sections 551.071 and 551.074. No action will be taken. We'll reconvene here as soon as that executive session is over. The time is 6:32 PM and the Board of Trustees of Mesquite ISD reconvenes in open meeting. We'd like to extend the welcome to each person here this evening, to our board members, to Dr. Rivera, to Ms. Samples. Everyone in the audience, welcome. We have with us tonight to deliver our invocation, Daniel Rory, who is with men's and ladies of honor. And then immediately following that, our pledge of allegiance will be given by Mesquite High School JROTC Cadet Brando Garcia. So if you'll all stand for our invocation and remain standing for the pledges.
Lord, I lift up before you today the great city and citizens of Mesquite. Because you determine our boundaries, we want to thank you for allowing us to be a part of this great city. We're thankful because you have such great plans for our city and the individuals that live and work here. We ask you to continue these great blessings and increase us in every good way. We pray first for the citizens of our city, that the gospel of the kingdom would reach their hearts and that all would come to know you as Lord and Savior. We pray that a spiritual awakening would take place in the hearts of our students and our citizens. We ask your blessings on each family represented by these board members and all who selflessly serve our city. We ask you to stir and provoke our citizens to love one another into increasing good works. We ask for unity and peace and the increase of strong and loving neighbors. We ask for an increase in volunteerism and that you would raise up strong servant leaders like those representing today, because you said the greatest among us should be the servants of all, from our school's leadership to our citizenry. I pray you would bless these servant leaders and their families. Blessed is the city whose God is the Lord. The citizens of Mesquite are blessed because you are exalted in prayer today, and we ask you to continue to bless, strengthen, revive, and uphold the citizens of Mesquite. Lord, help us to continue the vision you've placed in our mayor's heart and this board and staff, the vision for Mesquite to become the safest, cleanest, kindest, and most employed city in the world. Cover our schools, give favor and wisdom to our teachers, protect our students, and direct us throughout the school year. We ask these things in the name of your Son and our Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen. I believe in the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And now the Texas pledge. Honor the Texas flag. Pledge allegiance to the deep Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Thank you, Cadet Brando Garcia. Let's give him a hand. Next on the agenda is a board moment. I'm not aware of anyone wishing to speak. Any member of the board? Next is the audience portion.
PTA.
Okay. Yes, come forward. We're glad you're here.
Hello. Good evening. My name is Sabrina Weldon. I actually hold the advocacy chair for PTA this year, and I am filling in for Emily Buchanan, who is our current president. This is Madonna Turner, our VP for our Mesquite Council PTA. Tonight, we would like to give you a little bit of information about the Angel membership. So every year, we offer a kind of an ability for you to join different schools in the district, and you can also become the superintendent, where you can also join every campus in the district. And so tonight, we wanted to give you your membership information. I also wanted to let you know, we ended last year at 8%. That's what we covered in parent PTA members was 8% in our district. So moving forward, we would like to say that this is a new year and a new opportunity for our parents to really get involved and increase that 8%. While I'm here, I'm going to give you all a paper. Also, I would like to remind you that this is a rally year. So on February 27th, 2023, we will be having a rally day, and we will be having the PTA in front of the Capitol Building. We will be in front of the steps, and we will have different speakers. And just to let you know that this is a big year for your juniors and seniors to help participate in that knowledge and be a part of Rally Day. So thank you.
Next is audience portion, Ms. Jobe. This is for items that would be on the agenda. If you wish to address this board regarding an item on the agenda, we hear from you now. Okay, seeing none. I skipped students and staff guests, and I apologize for that. Go ahead, Laura. Next item on the agenda is our consent agenda. Does anybody have anything they wish to discuss on the consent agenda? We have a motion by Mr. Carbo and a second by Mrs. Whitlock to approve the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Next item under reports of the superintendent is under personnel to number one action item is to approve the administrative term contracts. Dr. Rivera?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Board President. Good evening, everybody. It's my honor tonight to introduce to you our recommendations for some positions. So I'm going to start with Mr. Terrence Williams. So please walk up to the lectern, Mr. Williams. Mr. Terrence Williams has completed seven, ten years in the field of education. He started his career as a CTE teacher in Midland ISD. He later transitioned to the DFW area, working as a teacher in DeSoto ISD, followed by a move to Dallas ISD, in which he was selected for the district's Fellow's Leadership Academy. In 2014, Mr. Williams began serving as an administrator in Dallas ISD prior to coming to Potteed High School as an assistant principal. He earned his Bachelor of Science degree and a Master's of Education degree from UTA, and he is our principal at the Mesquite Academy. So please, let's congratulate Mr. Williams.
Well, first, I'd like to thank God for the opportunity, my Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. I'd like to recognize some of my family in the audience, my wife Carrie, raise your hand. My son Kai, my daughter Taya, and my mother-in-law, she had to take her out. She's two years old. So what I'm learning is, a few years ago, when I came to Mesquite as an assistant principal, I came to the board meeting, and my son was a few years younger, and my wife had to take him out. Well, tonight, my mother-in-law had to take my daughter out, so I guess what I can say is, this would be the last board meeting with new kids, because she is the last one we're having. On top of that, I'd like to thank a couple of leaders that I've had in the district, and that is Taylor Morris and Kelly Long. Both of them are here tonight. Mr. Morris was the one that brought me on to Mesquite ISD, and I appreciate that. And Kelly Long has been my leader the last two years at Potteed High School. I'd also like to thank some of my coworkers that came tonight, Mr. Coward, raise your hand, Ms. Rose, and Ms. Hannah. They've been my fellow APs over at Potteed, and I really appreciate the opportunity. I know at times in my life, I've always felt like things have happened when they were supposed to happen, and not always when I wanted them to happen. But God has shown me that each time I've gotten opportunities, they've been when he's decided, and I was right and ready for it. And I'm right, and I'm ready to lead Mesquite Academy. So thank you very much.
We're also, thank you, Mr. Williams. We're also excited to announce some assistant principal hires, and so Ms. Jobe is going to read their bios and welcome them to the district.
We're going to start with Danielle White, new assistant principal at Agnew Middle Danielle has completed 13 years in the field of education, and during this time in Red Oak, she served as behavior specialist, records cloak, and finally, as a business teacher. She earned a Bachelor of Science degree from Charlton State University and a Master of Education from Concordia University. She also served seven years in the United States Navy. Our next new AP is Libra Cook at Frazier. Libra has completed 23 years in the field of education. Her teaching experience spanned 20 years across various districts, including Texarkana, Cedar Hill, Dallas, DeSoto, and Irving. Since 2019, she has served as an academic interventionist in Irving ISD. She earned a Bachelor of Science degree and a Master of Science degree from Henderson State University. And West Mesquite High School is welcoming Angela Adams, new assistant principal. Angela has completed 12 years in the field of education, and her career has been in Irving ISD to this point, where she served as a math inclusion teacher and special education department chair at Lady Bird Johnson Middle School. Later, she transitioned to Irving High School as the dean of students, and then returned to Johnson Middle School as the administrative liaison. She earned a Bachelor of Science degree from Jackson State University and a Master of Education from Lamar University. And from Potteed High School, we have Lee Barajas. Lee has completed 14 years in the field of education. She began her career in Dallas ISD as an English teacher and ELAR department chair at Samuel High School. In the 2009-10 school year, she was named Campus Teacher of the Year. While in Dallas ISD, she eventually transitioned to a campus testing coordinator role, and then a high school assistant principal. Later, she moved to Garland ISD and continued in the assistant principal position. She earned a Bachelor of Arts degree from St. John Fisher College in Rochester, New York, and a Master of Science degree in academic leadership from SMU.
Congratulations to each of you. The bad thing is that we've not voted to approve your appointments yet, so...
Mr. President, I make a motion that we approve all the term contracts.
We have a motion by Mr. Rose and a second by Ms. Collier to approve the administrative current term contract. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Congratulations again to each of you, and tomorrow will be a unique day, I'm sure, but I know it'll be a good day. Next item on the agenda is consider...
Excuse me for interrupting. If I could just ask the new assistant principals to stay out in the hallway for just a few minutes so we can get your photo. We need to get that taken care of, so that's it.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is to approve COVID leave.
This evening and propose extension of COVID leave. We're going to quickly take you through a presentation of what we've done in regards to COVID leave over the years, but as we are fortunate enough to welcome kids and staff back to a second consecutive year of in-person instruction, this is a timely topic for us to address. Currently, the situation is that we are, like I said, fortunate enough to be back in in-person instruction, face-to-face instruction, but we know the volatility of how the pandemic works and those kind of things. So with that being said, I'll give you a very brief history of COVID leave in Mesquite ISD. And so in 2020, the Families First Coronavirus Response Act, FF-CRA, was in effect from April 1st of 2020 through December 31st of 2020. This was federally funded and federally mandated, and it applied to Mesquite ISD and the public schools. In January of 2021, the board approved the COVID-19 resolution and extended the COVID leave through March 12th of 2021. And if I understand correctly, I think we extended that through the end of that year as well. Then, of course, last year, we had another extension or another resolution for the entire 2021 and 22 school year. So with that being said, of course, we talk about how the pandemic continues. What you see in front of you is the current COVID risk as listed on the Dallas County Health Services website. And unfortunately, currently, as of today, it's under extreme caution. And so, thank goodness, we're welcoming back kids again, like I said a couple of times before, but we know that that can change. We've lived through those types of ups and downs scenarios. Last January, for instance, with the onset of the Omicron virus, we know that we were overrun with positive COVID cases and all the implications to our operations every day on campuses. And so we want to make sure that although we are in a place where we can welcome kids back and take advantage of being back in school, the pandemic does continue, and we recognize that. So with that being said, the COVID leave that is proposed for the 22-23 school year is before you. We won't certainly read all of this to you, but if you just follow the bullet points, of course, it must be documented with a positive lab-confirmed COVID-19 test, things that we're used to, unfortunately, at this point of the pandemic. The second bullet point addresses the protocols that must be followed, the district protocols as far as quarantining and when people can return to work, those types of things. Then we move on to the third bullet point, which is more operational, that the leave request should be submitted in edgy for it, which has been our practice through last year. A maximum of three days can be used for the fall of 2022, and three days potentially for the spring semester of the 2023 part of the school year. The final bullet point points out that this would become, if this is something that you decide to approve, it would become effective today and run through the end of the fall semester. We felt like that was appropriate to reevaluate towards the end of the fall and determine what steps we'd need to take to appropriately position the district going into the spring. Of course, we know with the pandemic, like we talked about a minute ago, it can be volatile. Last spring, the beginning of the spring, in January, was the height of the Omicron process, and so we just want to have the flexibility to review and adjust as needed. So those are the parameters of the COVID leave that we're proposing for this year. So with that being said, I did mention that I was going to try and be brief, because my friends are timing me somewhere on the side here, so I think I'm doing good so far. What questions might you have that I can answer for you?
I think it's a very good practice doing this. We did it at the city, and it's been effective to this point. So as of today, now we're doing it at the school district, and that's a very good practice. Thank you.
Yeah, I appreciate you saying that.
Mike, why are we not... Did teachers report for work last Monday?
I didn't hear...
Teachers reported for work last Monday?
Yes, sir.
Were there any teachers affected last week? And is there any consideration? Do we need to post that back to last Monday?
Yeah, so the draft that you have in front of you is just set for approval based on tonight. We do know that we have a handful of staff that weren't able to come because they were already positive. We have positive cases. Throughout the summer, I think we, and Taylor, you can correct me, I think throughout the summer, we had approximately 30 cases, and I believe since teachers have reported back, we're at six or seven.
Would this make it retroactive to that date, then?
Well, that really depends on what the board feels comfortable in doing. The draft that we put in front of you would become effective today, but if it's the will of the board, we can certainly entertain that.
I would think if it's have already affected some folks, I don't know why we wouldn't make it effective last Monday, when teachers reported back to work. Does anyone else have any?
I think we should... But you said ask the doctor now, so taking a self-test doesn't... Oh, I didn't turn it on.
Yeah.
Taking a self-test doesn't count, yes?
No, no. It has to be a lab-confirmed COVID positive, and that's pretty standard. It's standard to what we've done across time during the pandemic, and it's standard to what other districts are doing.
What they're doing too.
As far as being eligible for the COVID leave.
Well, if I may, some of the literature that we're looking at, there was a bit of a restriction legally on the retroactiveness of this, but we will review, depending on your vote tonight, and take appropriate action if that's what you recommend.
So walk me through what happened. So I come back Monday, well, tomorrow. I think I have COVID. What happens? I'm a teacher. What do I do?
Well, the first thing, and I'll admit, Ms. Collier, that since I've moved from admin services to personnel services, I've kind of slept a few times, so perhaps Mr. Morris is going to have to help me. But if I wake up and I have symptoms, one of the first things that we want you to do is to report that to your campus nurse. And then we begin the process of contact tracing, determining whether we believe this is a COVID-positive case. Obviously, testing would have to be involved, those types of things. Taylor, am I missing any?
Yes.
Big pieces.
Okay. Just so we're all on the same page of what's expected.
Yeah.
Lab-confirmed positive test, okay.
So for the most part, unless you're a...
Can you go up to the lectern so the people watching can actually hear your response?
As Taylor comes up to the lecture...
Thank you. Just so it's, I mean, so you're clear on what, you're not guessing. Nobody's winging it.
Right. So obviously, if you think you have symptoms of COVID-19, we want you to stay home, so you'd report that to your nurse. We wouldn't report, the nurse is not going to report anything until there's a lab-confirmed test. And so once you go to the doctor, you get a lab-confirmed test, a lot of times, our teachers are going to take the home test first. That's going to give them the idea that I need to go to the doctor, and to be able to qualify for the leave, to turn in for the leave, they would need to have that.
Okay.
And then, again, they can return five days after their positive test or after symptom onset. So if I was sick today, didn't get a lab-confirmed until tomorrow, my five days starts today. I don't have to wait till the positive test.
Okay.
And then 24 hours fever-free, I'm able to come back after five days.
Okay. Any other questions?
I was just going to say, I appreciate us doing this. We're trying to do everything we can to support our staff and say thank you for this, for your efforts to stay in the classroom, and we will also take care of you if you're sick. We don't want you in the classroom if you're sick. And I love the fact that we're going to review this at the end of the semester.
Yeah.
If we need to bump it up or whatever, if this thing comes back again, we've got some flexibility here to just take care of our people, and that's what we're trying to do, is take care of our people, so.
Mr. Bingham, one of the things that's in the document in front of you tonight is, we will reevaluate that at the end of the fall semester, and administration will make a recommendation to this body in accordance with the numbers that we see at that particular time, to make sure. You've always supported our staff with their needs, and we want to ensure we stay nimble and responsive to the health needs of our staff.
Any motion to approve?
And I'll just, I'm sorry to interrupt you. I'll just echo that, that we appreciate, and we know the staff appreciate you looking out for their best interests.
Move to approve.
Mr. Bingham's motion. Second. Mr. Bingham, on your motion pending approval from our attorney...
If we can back it up.
Can we make this effective August 1st in the language?
If we can do that legally, yes.
Yeah. Okay. We have a motion to approve COVID leave effective August 1st, pending approval from our attorney. We have a motion by Mr. Bingham and a second by Mr. Carbo. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Hasso. We will, let's take a break. We need to get pictures of the staff that just were appointed, so we'll take about a five or 10-minute break. Okay, the time is 7:05 PM, and we will reconvene from our break. Next item on the agenda, under the Effectiveness Report, is a report from Library Services from Emma McDonald. Welcome, Emma. We're glad you're here.
Thank you so much. Dr. Rivera, board, thank you so much for the opportunity to be here tonight to share what our librarians and library services staff are doing to accomplish district goals. The post-pandemic world is one that is rapidly changing, requiring people to adapt quickly, blending traditional practices with new ways of thinking and interacting. This can be unsettling and confusing for many. In Mesquite ISD, we are working to combat that confusion through empowerment. Our ultimate goal is to empower students with the ability to think critically, make positive contributions to society, and have the skills to create a good life for themselves. Our challenge, then, is to give students experiences that provide what they need, even when we aren't exactly sure what the future holds. The only thing we know for certain is that the students of today need to be creative, flexible, and critical thinkers. With this in mind, our mission as librarians is to advance the ability to make informed decisions and think critically about the information that we read, see, hear, or view. We do that in three key ways. The first is by teaching everyone how to locate access and use the collection of library resources they have available to them 24/7. These resources are authoritative and selected especially for our students. When students can find reading material and information that is enjoyable and relevant to them, they can begin to drive their own learning. Additionally, this is a skill that will impact their future success in both college and career. Librarians teach these skills in a variety of ways, including face-to-face instruction and asynchronous instruction that anyone can access online through videos or other online tools. We have a vast collection of print and digital resources for MISD students, teachers, and parents to use. Physical books are available to anyone through our interlibrary loan program. Digital books, magazines... Digital books, magazines, newspapers, images, and sound files are all available to everyone at school and at home. This year, we saw 6.5 million searches performed on our digital resources and a 66% increase in the number of eBooks and audiobooks borrowed across the district. Librarians provide learning for everyone in the community, not just students. They provide professional learning for teachers on how to select and organize classroom libraries and use library online resources to find articles or images that enhance their lessons. They also teach parents how to navigate not only library resources but district resources as well. This past year, librarians hosted 8,744 parent education sessions, including one-on-one requests from parents. The second way we accomplish our mission to create informed decision makers and critical thinkers is through inquiry instruction. Once you know how to find and access information, you can use it to answer your own questions. Almost every subject area includes some element of research or inquiry. Librarians attend PLC meetings or meet one-on-one with teachers to plan these inquiry activities. Librarians also come up with fun ways for students to show and share their learning. At Thompson, students created a living museum and presented from the point of view of the historical figure they researched. At Kimball, students experienced different aspects of bat life as part of their inquiry project. This upcoming year, we are excited to team up with teaching and learning to further support inquiry in the classroom as instructional partners, teaching the inquiry skills and processes, as well as curating resources and experiences to enhance each inquiry project. The third way librarians work to create informed decision makers and critical thinkers is by making the library a place of community on the campus. They offer events, clubs, games, and experiences that allow students to collaborate and socialize while learning respect for each other and for shared community property. Another way our elementary librarians are connecting with their communities and supporting the Read Play Talk initiative is with baby book clubs. At these meetings, parents bring their toddlers and preschool-aged children for stories, literacy activities, and play. In support of district initiatives, librarians also staffed a book fair at both the Fall and Spring Read Play Talk festivals, raising money to purchase new books for the Read Play Talk bus. We are also working to build a culture of reading throughout the district under the umbrella of Mesquite Reads. As part of this, in 2021, we set an audacious goal for people in our district to read 21 million pages. Throughout the year, students and staff read and logged their reading using the program Read Squared. By December 17th, 2021, students and staff read and logged 21,594,756 pages, far surpassing our original goal. It is important to recognize that all of the things librarians are able to do for students, staff, and community wouldn't happen without the support of our library services staff. These ladies keep all of the systems running from technology to purchasing and processing all of the books and materials. They are a department of yes. Whatever the librarians need, they find a way to provide it and support it. As you have seen, school libraries in Mesquite are special places. They are places where students and staff feel they belong, where they have the opportunity to excel, and where their dignity is honored. At any given time, you may walk into a library and encounter students building and creating. You may see the library turned into a surgery center, a mock polling station, or a forensics lab. That's because when you come to the library or work with a librarian, you can expect to get an elevated learning experience. Before I end, I'd like to introduce you to a few of the people who make the greatness happen in our libraries. These are our Mesquite ISD librarians. Thank you. And that's how it's done. [laughter]
Very good.
Thank you. Sorry, any questions?
That is right up there.
Yeah, I got egged on by somebody to, to do that.
I do have one question.
Yes, sir.
About the eBooks online and you talk about accessing that from home. Do community members that don't have kids in MISD, is there a way for them to access the eBooks? Or do you have to have a student login?
You, you do have to have a student login to, to access, well, actually, I'm going to take that back. As far as parents are in, in the district, we can create a library card that's online for parents to be able to access. As far as community members are concerned, the Mesquite Public Library has access also to Overdrive, which is the system that we use. They have a different book selection from us because we very carefully curate our elementary, middle, and high school books to make sure they're appropriate for those ages. But yes, our community members have free access through the Mesquite Public Library to eBooks. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
That's a great question.
So Emma, what's the goal this next year on Pages Read?
Oh goodness, I don't know. We try.
One billion, billion.
We try to come up with different challenges each year. And so we're actually considering, still in the thinking process, but we are considering a challenge regarding digital reading. So eBooks and audiobooks and how many of those are read throughout the year. Thank you.
Thank you. Awesome.
Thank you very much.
Lots of learning and lots of fun occurs in our libraries. My wife and I have been able to visit several of the elementary libraries and read to the students. And what a great environment it is. Thank you so much for all that, all of our librarians do for our students. Next item on the agenda is a report from the Food and Nutrition Services, and we're going to hear from Lark Stewart at this. Welcome.
I'm the Director of Food and Nutrition Services. I'm going to share a short video with you today about our summer meal program.
Mesquite ISD's Food and Nutrition Services has been providing free summer meals to any child under the age of 18 for the last 28 years. On June 7th, 2022, MISD's Food and Nutrition Services presented their first ever kickoff event to engage the community and bring awareness to their summer meal program. Our Food and Nutrition Services Department enjoys demonstrating MISD's core values in all things we do. Our Food and Nutrition Services Department prides itself on the motto, "Healthy minds start with healthy meals." Even throughout the summer, Food and Nutrition Services Department strives to provide a cultivating culture of health promotion within the community. No program is successful without the hard work and dedication of an amazing team. Office and staff brought their own kids to participate in our event and enjoyed free Kona ice that kept us cool on that warm day. Not only does our department consistently participate in the continuing education of our staff and employees, but we love giving back to our community by providing education on healthy eating and resources. Food and Nutrition Services Department loves collaborating with those in the community. Our kickoff event partnered with MISD's favorites such as Read Play Talk, K E O M radio station, and Mesquite ISD's Art Department. Public services included Mesquite Police, Mesquite Fire Station, and Homeland Security's Dallas Unit. Additional Mesquite community members that came out to support the event included Mesquite's parts and wreck and a Kona ice truck. Food and Nutrition's first summer kickoff event was a success. Not only do we have more than 300-plus children present for a free meal, but we loved welcoming those in the community to come together and enjoy time learning, playing, and enjoying a hot meal during the summertime. Food and Nutrition Services is thankful for all the staff members that show up daily to demonstrate the four core values and provide a positive experience for all members of the Mesquite ISD community.
Thank you for letting me share about our first summer feeding kickoff event. It was a blast to spend time interacting with the Mesquite community and our students. And it's a great intro into the rest of our programming. So in 2021, which was two years ago, we had a substantial decrease in the number of students eating with us due to the pandemic and the number of remote learners. But last year in 2122, we were able to come back strong. For breakfast, we served 1.4 million, almost 1.5 million meals, which is an increase of over 58% over the year before. For lunch, we had, we served 4.1 million meals, which was a 76, almost 77% increase over the year before. And this year was our first year to introduce the snack program, which we were able to implement at 36 locations to help our campuses with recovering learning. We wanted to support those, those kiddos. FNS is the only department that is 100% self-funded, which means the district does not have to use fund balance to cover any of the costs of FNS. All of our expenditures must be covered from revenue, which we earn by serving meals to students. It can be a delicate balance to ensure there's enough money coming in to cover labor, food costs, and other expenses that we, that we utilize in order to feed our students. FNS ended the year with a small surplus, which is about one month's operating expense. This ensures that we're able to begin the school year without dipping into district funds before our first reimbursement comes back from the state. When we're fully staffed, we have about 473 total positions. Last year, we operated the entire year with about 120 short, which is about 25%. I'm thrilled, though, that this year, we're already seeing an influx in applicants due to the wage increases that you all approved just a couple of months ago. So thank you. This year, we also passed our administrative review. You could call this the state audit. Although it was a 12-week process, we actually only received 10 weeks to complete this due to the auditor starting one week late because of COVID and then also because of school closures due to COVID and weather that happened during that time period. We had two small findings. One was an outdated sign, and the other one was because adult meal prices were set too low. Both were resolved, and we received praise from the auditors on what a great program that we operate here in Mesquite. Supply chain issues were a major struggle for us in 2122. Before COVID, our distributor would substitute items maybe one to two times a week, and often it was never. This past year, however, when we placed a food order through a distributor, our trucks would show up with 40 to 50% of the food and supplies being substituted with products we'd either never seen or never ordered before. Sometimes we would get a day or two's notice, but other times, we wouldn't find up until it showed up at the truck at the back door. So this created a huge burden for everyone. The office staff would have to rush to update our documentation to ensure we're compliant with state regulations before the food was actually served to the kids. The kitchen teams would then have to figure out on the fly how to cook new food items that they'd never seen before, and then doing all of this while being short-staffed. We also had vendors just stop making food, even if we'd already ordered the food through our commodity allocation six to nine months prior. For example, our three main beef suppliers quit making hamburger patties in October of '21, and we were unable to get them for the rest of the year. But, good news, they're back. We have confirmation that they'll be back for 2223, although we do expect to make, to have continued supply chain issues for the remainder of the school year. Even with all these hurdles, we were able to utilize 95% of our total commodity dollars, which was a real feat considering some of the area districts did not get anywhere close to 95%. To curb absenteeism and to reduce turnover, in January of 2022, FNS implemented the recognition awards for team members who had perfect attendance and great attendance. This program immediately reduced absenteeism, and an average of 70% of FNS employees received the award. I'm very proud that we're going to be able to continue this program into 2223. New in 2223, we have the new community eligibility program. Under CEP, all students eat for free for the next five years. So we don't have to go back to the state to get that re-approved. So from here on out, for the next five years, all students will receive free breakfast and lunch. It's a great benefit to our program. It's a great benefit to the community and a great benefit to our students. This also eliminates alternative meals, which you might have heard associated with lunch shaming, and it also reduces any negative balances. It also reduces administrative costs and paperwork. Parents don't, no longer have to fill out a free and reduced application. And under all this provision, FNS actually qualifies for over 96% of the maximum funding, which is top-notch. Also new this year, we have implemented what's called a training academy. It's a new pathway for our newly hired employees to receive training. They get basics, classroom training, hands-on training. And our goal here is to prevent turnover by transitioning new employees into FNS and then also relieving our managers of basic training requirements while they're still short-staffed. We've already had two classes so far, and we've passed through 28 new hires, including 15 that passed today. So we're very excited they're going to be starting their first day on their campus on the first day of school tomorrow. One of the things that we've noticed over the past couple of years is that students are not taking advantage of free breakfast. So this year, we're partnering with principals to better meet the needs of those students by offering different types of breakfast options. So we'll still have our traditional breakfast and our program that's called Breakfast in the Classroom. But this year, we're going to be implementing more grab-and-go ideas where we're welcoming students in at the front door. And so we may be the second person they see if they ride the bus. We may be the first person that they see if we are at the front door. So we want to make sure each student's experience is really great and they get a full tummy before they start their day, so that way their learning can be most effective. We're also implementing what's called Breakfast After the Bell. So any principal that would like the breakfast line to stay open or for us to have a grab-and-go station at their front desk, then we'll have that option for them for any students who are starting off their day poorly by being tardy. Maybe they've had a rough day morning already, and if we can change their day by giving them a hot meal, then that's what we want to do, better support their learning education. Other goals that we have for 2223 are increasing our staffing levels. We need to get those positions filled. We're very excited about the Training Academy for that. We're also creating budget awareness at the campus level, trying to make sure our managers are aware what's going in and out of their kitchens. We're also working to create a seamless transition for the Academy and Learning Center merge coming up. And then, very exciting, we're going to be piloting the supper program. So we saw how effective our snack program was, and we saw that there's a huge need in the district for a meal for kiddos that need to stay after school. Maybe they have after-school programming or they have athletics. So now we have an opportunity where we can serve them a full meal and just set up a snack and to make sure that they get fed. Some of the kids that we see, you know, when they go home on Friday, they may not eat the entire weekend. And so if we can add one more meal into their day, even if it's just a few times a week, we want to make sure that they're getting the minimum nutrition they need to grow and be successful in their careers. So thank you so much for having, for, for the honor of presenting on behalf of my department today. I'm very proud of what FNS has been able to accomplish in the past year. Is there any questions?
How do, how do we combat that problem where you say that a student may go home on Friday and not have a bite to eat until Monday morning?
Then we still do blue backpack.
So that's not part of our, our department, but some campuses do still do what's called the backpack program. We're researching ways that we can better help with that need because we're starting to see it pop up more and more frequently, and it just absolutely crushes your heart when you hear a kid say that. So that's one of the main things that we're trying to focus on is adding that third meal in for our students, so that way they don't have that opportunity to go. in for our students, so that way they don't have that opportunity to go without all weekend.
So I've heard in our prayer meetings and all that, that there are some churches around here that are doing some work on that behalf of getting meals and all that. Have they contacted your department or talked with the school district at all?
No, we have not heard from any churches or any outside organizations.
Would it be something that you would be interested in?
Definitely. We would love to find ways to partner. Oftentimes, the evening meals are difficult to staff because a lot of our staff have small children at home, and they need to be home with those kids. So if there's a way we can partner with a church or other organization that has volunteers, it would only benefit the community.
I will suggest that, then.
Absolutely. Please send them our way. I'm happy to hear.
Yes, ma'am.
The program that Mr. Carbo is referring to, I think, is handled by Jennifer Mobley, and it's for the MISD homeless students. And I know, like Kevin said, there are numerous congregations where I go to church, the Mesquite Church of Christ. We do that on a regular basis. But in the past, how long has free breakfast been offered to our students?
Well, that's a complicated question. So this past year, it was free to all students. Prior to that, it depended on the campus. So we had what's called the Universal Free Program. So if a, if a campus is 80% free or reduced or higher, then it's mandated by the state that those students receive free breakfast. So in any opportunity where we had a campus that was maybe at 78% or 75%, we would go ahead and roll them up into that free breakfast program. But it was about half and half prior to last year.
Yeah, the breakfast in the classroom sounds like a really, really good idea, so.
Absolutely. It's very popular.
Good. Any other comments or questions for Ms. Stewart?
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next item on the agenda is under administration. It's an action item for the board to select a delegate to the 20, it says 2023 Tasby Delegate Assembly. I think that's 2022.
2022, it's in September.
Right.
We need a delegate and an alternate.
We have any volunteers or any drafts?
Yeah.
Eddie Rose for delegate. Anybody want to be the alternate?
I'll be a backup.
Okay, that's an alternate.
You gonna be there Saturday?
Are you gonna be here? You're not gonna be traveling?
I'll fly in for Saturday.
I'm working on it. I'll be a backup.
Tia for alternate.
And Tia for alternate, yeah.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Stewart.
Second.
And a second by Mr. Carbo to select Mr. Rose as our delegate and Ms. Collier as our alternate for the 2022 Tasby Delegate Assembly. Is there any discussion?
I will point out that Mr. Carbo is automatically a delegate since he serves as the Director of the Tasby Board of Directors, and that the information about resolutions, the priorities and so forth, we'll have that in time for our September meeting to discuss any issues on there.
We just approved, we had 186 resolutions that we talked about in that meeting. And this, this weekend, we had our meeting. So we should have all that information ready for them.
Okay, good. All in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Next item is an action item to approve the endorsement for Tasby Board of Directors, Region 10, Position B.
Yes, Mr. President.
If you don't mind. Position B this year has six candidates. The incumbent man is Linda Gooch. I sit as Chair of the Resolutions Committee, and she happens to be my Vice Chair. Linda Gooch has, has been a part of Tasby for about 26 years, as, as I have. And she's always been a friend of Mesquite and very loyal to the kids, the children of Texas. So I know her very well. I know that she's, she's also doing a great job, and I would like to know that we support Linda.
I'll second that, and I would like to add that I was looking through the list of all the directors of Tasby this weekend. Used to have a lot of experience on the Tasby Board of Directors. And you take out the first six or seven folks that have more experience, which Linda Gooch does, the rest of them have less than five years' experience on that Board of Directors. In fact, the majority of them are three years or less. There's been a lot of turnover, and there needs to be some experience and knowledge to stay on that board for it to continue to move forward as an outstanding organization that it is.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Carbo and a second by Mr. Stewart to approve the endorsement of Linda Gooch to the Tasby Board of Directors, Region 10, Position B. Is there any discussion? Sunnyvale is a great neighboring district and do a really good job in all that they do. All in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Next item is under business. It's an action item to approve the notice to the Teacher Retirement System, or TIS, TRS, to opt out of the TRS Active Care. Mr. Poppy?
Good evening, members of the board. Well, you know, I was told there was going to be a surprise at the end of the library presentation. I thought they were gonna allow you to talk in the library, you know, so did not think it was gonna be, you know, on me. But hey, I do want to take a few moments and just talk about the item we have on the agenda tonight, all kidding aside. I want to tell you exactly what this agenda item is, and I want to be very clear in what exactly this agenda item is not, because I know there's gonna be a lot of people listening, and so I want to make sure that everybody, our employees, are very clear as to what this option, or this agenda item does for us. If approved, this allows the MISD to let TRS know, report to TRS that we intend or we are opting out of being in TRS Active Care Healthcare Plan, not TRS Retirement Plan, strictly Healthcare Plan, effective September 1, 2023. Our intent or our purpose of this notifying TRS of this is this allows us not to go enter to the market. As we enter the market, our consultant, Lockton Healthcare Group, our benefit group, has given us their perspective. They feel that if by notifying TRS and having that be official, we will, should get a better interest, more participants in the healthcare market, knowing that we have made this decision. However, there's always a caveat. We have an opportunity, and we've been verified with TRS. They've actually heard it from the top of TRS all the way down to the call, and they've updated their, their verbiage. But if the district decides December or November, you know, hey, this is a side, this is not the decision we want to make. We've gone to the market. Maybe the data didn't come back to the level we thought it would, or it wasn't feasible, or it's just, we think it's best to hold off another year. We can come back to the board, have you approve an agenda item that says that we are, you know, negating this, or we're gonna opt back in. And whatever is on the books with TRS as of December 31, 2022, is what goes on the next year. So we're gonna opt out. We're recommending we opt out. We're gonna go to the market, see what the market brings to us. If the market brings something that we feel is worth going, and we'll have, you know, we have meetings in the next few months of the healthcare group, then we will make that recommendation to keep that. If the market comes back and we just don't have the data that says it's good to go, then we can come back to the board and basically, for the lack of a better term, opt back in as long as we do it before December 31, 2022. Then whatever, the last thing we let TRS know as of December 31 is what goes on for next year. And we can repeat the process next year afterwards if we need to. Exactly, exactly. We're letting the, we're letting the healthcare companies know we're serious, and then we're letting, so that we can get the best, you know, the best feedback from the market to really let everybody and open up as many vendors as possible, or participants as possible from healthcare companies, to let them sharpen their pencils and let them work with us and our consultants to put a plan together, and then we can see where the next step is after that.
So you got assurances from TRS that we can still say we're not going?
We have it in writing.
You do have it in writing?
Yes.
So December 31 is the actual date?
Yes, whatever is on that, on the record.
It gives us time if we need to reverse course, we can reverse course.
We have, we're protecting both sides.
So if we vote no, we have no choices. If we vote yes, we have choices.
Yeah, but if we vote no, then we can still go to the market, but we do, our, our recommendation is, or the feedback from our consultants is, we're not gonna get, we're not gonna get as good feedback or pencil sharpen as good, we're not gonna get, take us as seriously. And we want to make sure, we want to get the most number of participants out there because they're, if we don't opt out, it's not guaranteed that all companies can participate.
We're also moving on a dual track to get the best claims data we can from the current carrier.
Yes.
And that, and Lockton, our consultant, thinks this is a, that this is their recommendation to go with this month, maybe put a little more pressure on TRS.
Yeah, we have.
To do the right thing.
We have that meeting this week.
And we'll know that probably in a couple of weeks.
Yes.
Is there a penalty?
We're not, we're not losing any options by voting for yes on this tonight.
Let me ask, have you looked into what the Tasby Benefits has there doing some of this now?
Tasby has a plan. It's a, basically, it's a PPO plan, very similar to what Active Care. It's the same model. We have, I've met with Tasby, actually Gallagher is who the company they have partnered with. We've had that conversation, met with Lockton afterwards, based on the information that Tasby had talked about. Their recommendation, or not their recommendation, but their, what they option, what they opt in is they can, you can, a district can go with a Tasby. You have a fixed premium increase of what it can be for the next three years. And so that gives you a chance to get some of your data, your, so you can, your claim history. And then at that time, whatever happens that years in four and five, you know, you don't know. So right at this point in time, we've had that conversation with Tasby, I mean, I've had that conversation with Tasby, had a, met with Lockton, and that we know that that, we have that, that out there, that option is out there. We do want to go to the market and see what we have. We can get the same network as basically what Tasby has, same network as what Active Care has, to bid on our, on our, our plan design specifically. And remember, like, most of the plans are just gonna give you, here's a PPO off the shelf. We want to incorporate our clinic, and we want to incorporate our pharmacy. So those are the two things that we have going for us that very, or vast majority of districts in the state do not have. So for us, an off-the-shelf plan is good. I'm not saying it's not the direction we want to go, but there are some other avenues we want to explore since we have our own clinic and we have our own pharmacy.
So by doing all this, what we're trying to do for our staff is to give them better opportunities for coverage as well as reduced cost. Is that correct?
Yeah, we are trying to get away from health insurance and try to develop a true healthcare plan that benefits all of our employees, or as many of our employees as possible, at a cost that is much less than TRS Active Care. If the premium cost isn't much difference, we want the out-of-pocket cost to be much less for our employees, and we want to be able to utilize the clinic and facilities that we already have, that our, that our staff, most of our staff are familiar with, have a relationship with, and they know. So that not only, so that we can develop the healthcare plan, that's not just health insurance or healthcare, it's actually part of the MISD family, is why employees want to be a part of MISD, just another reason of why they want to be.
Could I ask, could I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am.
What about dental and vision? You know, now it comes through TRS and all that, so.
Actually, it does not go through TRS Active Care. We have a, we go.
Still offer it?
Yeah, we offer it. Yeah, it's an answer.
Will that be a part of whatever?
At this, with TRS Active Care, that's, that's a different question. I mean, that's not involved in TRS Active Care. We are looking at all of the benefits throughout the district, and I say we, it's really, it's HR, it's personnel, Mr. Hasso and his group. We're looking at, at that process, and we will look at each year.
Okay.
And if there's an opportunity, right now, healthcare is the big one. So we're trying to, you know, get that one, not to say that we won't be able to incorporate some of all those in together as we work through the process.
Okay.
Yeah, we are well aware that there are some other, you know, there's opportunities, there's an opportunity there to look at, we want to look at to see if we can do, to help our employees, not just health insurance, but also with voluntary products, which is dental, life, you know, et cetera, et cetera.
And I believe you currently have a committee of people that are reviewing some of this that are involved. Is Mr. Bingham on that committee also?
Yes, he is.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, so we.
How long, so this happens now. We've got another four months to shop. We say, hey, we changed our mind, we're not doing it. Nothing changes.
We have to do it before December 31.
Okay. And then, there's no penalty for us doing this? There's no punishment element to this?
No.
Okay.
And the new plan will not start until?
The earliest it would start would be September 1, 2023.
Okay.
So we're way ahead.
Yeah, way ahead of the curve.
And under TRS rules, you can go out, but you can't come back for five years. Isn't that correct?
Yeah, once you elect out and December 31 passes, whatever, if you've out, then you're out for the next five years. And if you don't opt out, then you're in for the, well, no, you're only actually in for one year, sorry. You can, each year, you can, you can, but once you're out, you're out for five.
If we can't get this done for September 23, we can still do it for September 24.
So we'd have to vote, do this again?
Yeah.
Okay.
If we go through the process and the committee says, hey, I think we got some opportunities here, but just not really ready to make that full recommendation, then we can push it out another year.
Yeah, just for clarification, if we vote, if the board votes today to accept, we try to maximize all the resources, use our clinic, use our pharmacy, go to our consultants, and we see that it's not going to be advantageous to our staff, you will see this item coming back in front of you as an opting back in way before December 31.
Yeah.
The clock doesn't run out.
Correct. And, but what we're trying to do is what Mr. Poppy said. Basically, we're leveraging our resources to ensure that we can offer the best health plan for our staff at the best premium. We know that this year, we did not get an increase in premium because of the influx of federal dollars. Anybody can see what's gonna happen the following year. It doesn't take a prophet to understand that next year, there is gonna be increases to the premium. And so we're trying to venture out, explore and provide options for our employees that is in their best interest, premium being one of them, but also quality of services. And so we're just exploring.
Yeah, just clarify that TRS received $450 million of federal funds this year, which is why there was no premium increase. And as such, it's a patch, but is that, did it, was the problem gonna be addressed? I mean, going, years coming down the road, is it gonna go, we're gonna have more premium increases and increases? And unfortunately, in, in Texas, or public education in Texas, the bulk of those premium increases are borne by the employee. And that, again, that's recruit, that's retain, and that's part of the process of why we want to look at offering our own so we can help create that, that buy-in to let our employees know, A, we care, but B, we're actually gonna make it less expensive, less inconvenient, less out-of-pocket for you, to make it, make it even one of the many more reasons why they want to be part of MISD.
Pete, with the number of school districts in Texas, is there any evidence that TRS Active Care is trying to do anything to improve their situation or their offerings to public school districts?
Yeah, they've done some things over the last couple of years. This is the first year that they have had regional pricing. Before, it was, you know, Active Care 1 was the same premium across the state, and 2, and now they've actually broken it down by, I think, the regions across the state. Dallas is a little bit higher than, than normal.
No, it didn't.
Yeah, didn't really do a whole lot for, for us in the metroplex area. They have done that. They have, they are very active in trying to get agreements or send information up to the, to the staff to listen, hey, if you're gonna go get an MRI, hey, here's your pervert provider, this one charges, you know, minimal, but it's still good quality. But what TRS is, and I've had this conversation with, with the head person of TRS, who I have a vast amount of respect for, she's, she cares, and she's a top-notch individual and does her job very well. But I said, one of the unique things, or one of the things that, that the school district can do a lot better than, than a statewide plan can do, is we can create partnerships with our local community, we can create partnerships with our local networks. We're in a position where we can have direct communication with our employees. I mean, it's really hard to explain healthcare on, on, on the internet, you know, on going to a website or, or getting a handbook. So we're able to provide that service one-on-one to our employees if needed. We're able to answer those questions. And so we just feel that it's a better, not only can we, you know, but we could also do preventative care items, early screenings, and we can actually see the data and show us how that we are helping our, our staff. Whereas if we do it with Active Care, you know, it's, it's just an out-of-pocket for us, and if we save anything, we'll never know it, you know, we don't know it. So it's just something that we have a more direct impact on.
Do you think we'll be able to find a better deal?
I firmly believe we will. I would be surprised if we wouldn't, but I've been surprised in my career before. Anything's possible. But I do believe that with, with, with our reputation, with our clinic, with our pharmacy, and the discussions that we've had leading up to this, I believe that we're in a very viable position to be able to come up with something, whether it's this September to viable position to be able to come up with something, whether it's this September 2023 or '24, I believe we're in a position to where we will, I would be hard-pressed to think that we would not be able to come up with something that, that provides better or better coverage at a better price and less out-of-pocket cost and more convenience to our staff.
Cool.
Which is the only reason why we're doing this. We want it better for, for our, for our staff.
Motion?
I move that we approve a notice to the teacher retirement system to opt out of the TRS Active Care.
Yeah.
We have a motion by Mrs. Whitlock and a second by Ms. Collier to approve the notice to TRS to opt out of TRS Active Care. Is there any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President, I'm sorry.
What was that?
Mr. President.
Okay.
Dearly noted, dearly noted.
Mr. President, I'd just like to make sure that, at a minimum, that we review this for possible action item at the December board meeting, no later than December board meeting, it could be earlier, but I want to make sure it is on there.
This, this is a matter of information that our committee is meeting every month to stay on top of this, and we've got a good, good crew together.
Yeah, I just wanted to have it on the agenda for December at the latest to discuss it or take action.
So we will add it to the December agenda, just as a kind of report.
Or just an update in December.
Well, we have, we have to make a decision.
That's what's going to be, say, you don't have a choice.
Decision, updates can be done before, updates can be done before December, by December, we have to have a decision.
Yeah, I'm just saying by the latest.
A decision made in December.
Okay, all in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Next item is the inaction item to approve our quarterly report on investments. Mr. Poppy?
Members of the board, this evening, each quarter, we provide a quarterly investment report. Once a year, we provide that quarterly investment report, and we ask Hilltop Securities, Mr. Scott McIntyre, he's here tonight. He comes once a year and gives you an update of the quarterly report, walks you through it, and answers any questions or any questions on the quarterly, specifically the quarterly report or just the market in general. And it has been quite eventful the last few times at the market, but I will turn the time over to Mr. McIntyre.
Welcome, Scott.
Good evening. It's good to see everybody again. It's been a while. Everybody's got a few more gray hairs. I'm not going to spend too much time in the economy because I think everybody knows what's going on, but I want to remind everybody that we started the year at zero in terms of the overnight fund rate, and the Fed has raised the overnight funds rate by 225 basis points, and that has all happened since the middle of March. In fact, 150 basis points have happened since the middle of June. So when you look at this report and you look at your rate, keep in mind that this is going to be quite a bit different the next time we're here. So, and, and of course, everybody knows this, but what the Fed is trying to do is destroy demand because they can't do anything about the supply side of the equation, the two of them together create inflation, and right now inflation is at a 41-year high. So, and they're going to be very careful, there's really not anything they can do about it, but at some point, we may wind up in recession. Just want to caution people that this recession, if it happens, is not going to look like most recessions, simply because at this point, I know you've read this as well, but for every one person who's looking for a job, there's 1.8 jobs available. So it's a very unusual situation that the Fed's trying to navigate. There, a lot of people feel like that Congress and the Fed made mistakes during the pandemic, but I will tell you that I was there in, in March, standing there wondering what was going to happen to all of us and hoping that Congress and the Fed would come in and do something so that we didn't fall off the cliff. And so right now, we've, we're dealing with the residue, but I'm not pointing fingers at all. This is a new report format. You know, if you guys have seen the ones over the years, it's a little bit different. I'm going to point out some things. I'm going to start on page five. And first thing I want to point out is the income summary. So for the quarter that ended June 30, there was $533,000 for that quarter that was earned. By my calculation, if your balance stays reasonably close to where your balance is, you should double that in the current quarter. You should actually double that again in the next quarter. So I believe that in the fourth quarter of this year, you're actually going to have income that's approaching $2 million, which is a lot more normal. The reason I say that is because during this second quarter, where $533,000 was earned, the average yield on the portfolio was about 65 basis points. By the time we roll into the end of the year, the overnight rate should be close to 3.5%. So it's, it's pretty basic math. I will tell you that the portfolios that are shorter benefit. Longer maturity portfolios don't benefit as much. I would say that the average school district portfolio in the state probably has an average maturity of about seven or eight months. This portfolio has an average maturity of about two months. That means it resets a lot faster. That means there's a lot more money that's made. I love to take credit for that, but that actually comes from, from your group. Your group decided that, Pete in particular, decided that it was better to be extremely short, and so you're going to benefit from that. Again, I'd love to take credit. We shortened duration on everybody. We didn't shorten duration as much for, for, we would not have shortened Mesquite quite as much as Mesquite decided to. So I think that's something you guys should all be well aware of. So when you're making, the amount of money that you're making in the fourth quarter, a lot of that has to do with the district and the finance department, and Pete in particular. And going on to portfolio characteristics, the next step over, the yield to maturity is 84 basis points at the end of June. That will move up very, very quickly by the end of September. You'll see the next time you review a report that that is the case. When I was talking about the years to final maturity, as of June, it was 0.15 years. So when the Fed makes big, big 75 basis point rate increases, all your money is, is either cash or it's very short. You have securities that are maturing every single week, and they're maturing with yields of 14 or 15 basis points, and they're being reinvested back at 3, 3.25, somewhere along those lines. So a, a good job in that sense. I think the diversification is very good between your CDs and your commercial paper and your, your local government investment pools and your full faith and credit treasury. So from a credit perspective, this is a very good portfolio. It's very, very liquid, and it should perform really well as we roll forward into the remainder of the year. The, let's go to page seven, and this will just show you that diversification that we're talking about, and you'll want to look at the June 30, since that's the end of the most current quarter, and you can see that CDs, which made up a large portion of the portfolio right now, are only 15%, and those will mature and go away because banks don't want the money right now because they're flesh with cash. Commercial paper, everything is top-rated commercial paper. Those are things like Toyota Motor Credit, JP Morgan, names along those lines, highest available credit. And about 25% of the portfolio is in very short commercial paper, and then almost 40% it is in investment pools, and they reset almost immediately when the Fed raises rates. The next rate increase likely to be 75 basis points, and that is likely to be the 21st of September. So that's the next one on the, on the way.
Aren't we capped at 25% on commercial paper in our policy?
You are getting very close to your cap. So what's happening there is that when you have a maturity, we're, we're looking at your balance, we're determining whether or not you have any room under the cap to even roll it. But, but everything is going to wind up maturing and actually rolling, to be honest with you, it's all real short. Again, big benefit. Finally, going to page nine. Now, this is the benchmark comparison, and I will tell you that some of the benchmarks are outperforming the portfolio, and that's to be expected when you have very, very rapid rate increases because you have what we refer to as legacy assets that you bought before. They have to roll off, and they will roll off, and they'll roll off very fast. But the portfolio yield at the end of June was 84, and for comparison's sake, the one year CMT, which is the one-year constant maturity treasury, was at an 85. That's sort of how we wind up gauging. Of course, the pools are ahead because they've got much more liquid cash. And of course, part of the Mesquite ISD portfolio actually includes the pools themselves.
Scott, I had a question about the indexes. You know, we've used these same ones for quite some time. Is this still the good batch of indexes we need to use? Do we need to modify?
Yeah, we, we like to use, so the Treasury indexes, we feel are, are good because you understand what they are. I don't like to use composites because they're black box. You know, sometimes you're going to be above the, the, sometimes you're going to be above the benchmark, and sometimes you're going to be below. It would be extremely unusual if you were above right now. This is actually the worst first half performance for the bond market as a whole in 160 years. So, you know, if you had invested in a 30-year treasury bond, you would have lost in January, January 1, you would have lost 26%. And that's entirely market risk because it's, there's no credit risk associated with the treasury. So that gives you an idea, and the shorter you go, the less market risk you have, the less you're exposing yourself to. Again, coming back to the idea that the average maturity is 0.15 years here. So, anyway, I think that I could really get into more detail, which I know you don't want this evening, but I'd be more than happy to answer any questions you have.
I know you're not an economist, but do you believe that we're not in a recession currently?
That is the big question. We have, we've had two consecutive quarters of negative GDP growth. That is the classic definition, but we've never, ever had a recession where there were so many more jobs than people looking for work. So, and the official definition of recession isn't made by those two consecutive quarters, it's made by the National Bureau of Economic Research. So, and it almost doesn't matter, it's just a word, in my opinion. You know, I think things are going to be okay. The economy will definitely slow down, there will be a little discomfort, yields will be higher, inflation is going to be uncomfortably high for a while. A couple of years from now, it wouldn't surprise me at all if we're talking about deflation. I do believe used car prices are going to come way down, new car prices are going to come way down. I think housing is going to catch up eventually. I think that computer chips are going to come back online, not only where they were, but we're going to have 30 or 40% more than we had. So prices on goods are going to come down, they're not going to continue to go up forever. And, and I don't think that they're going to actually even out to where it's 1% to 2% inflation. I think it's actually going to be deflation that we're talking about in two or three years, which isn't a bad thing. But these are, these are, these are odd times.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. McIntyre?
No, I appreciate what you guys do to keep an eye on our finances and our funds and so forth, and working with the staff and keeping us in the, in the loop, but also trying to maximize what we need for our taxpayers and our citizens and for our school district. Thank you, Scott.
Absolutely. Well, you guys, you guys do a really good job here in the district. We see a lot of, see a lot of districts and a lot of what's going on, and you guys are, you guys are champions.
Thanks to Pete, your wisdom on that, Pete. Seriously.
He did a great job. That was a, it's a good call.
This is an action item. We have a motion by Mr. Seward and a second by Mr. Rose to approve the quarterly report on investments. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries.
Good. Thank you very much. Good to see you all.
Appreciate it.
See you in a year.
Next item is an action item to approve the anticipated collection rate. Mr. Poppy?
Good evening, members of the board. Tonight, part of the statute requirements each year is for the board to approve the anticipated collection rate. The city of Mesquite collects our taxes for us. Ms. Bukeski from the city of Mesquite has certified that the anticipated rate would be 100%. The year prior was, actual was 98.66. Current year, by the time you add in penalties, delinquent, we are over 100%. So she can't go above 100 on a, on a thing, but she's, that was why she, she said, she said, I feel very comfortable you're going to be over 100%. So, so we're just asking just to meet the, you know, the Texas Education Code 2604, Part B, and to approve that.
We have a motion by Mr. Bingham and a second by Ms. Collier to approve the anticipated collection rate of 100%. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is an action item to approve a resolution to accept the certified values for tax year 2022. Mr. Poppy?
The state of Texas, truth in taxation, normally, normally what we would do is we would actually approve this, then the next agenda item would be the tax rate. However, that normally be in September, however, due to some unique circumstances this year, we are going to, we're doing on this agenda item, and we will be doing the tax rate at a later, later date in, in, in August. So as such, we want to still make sure that we're in compliance and just, since doing it before. So we're asking to the government body to, to approve the certified taxable value, which were given to us by the Dallas County Appraisal District, which were $12.53 billion, which was an increase of a little over approximately 12%.
Pete, when did you say we have to do our tax rate? By when?
Two scenarios. If the district does not plan on doing a, what's called a VETR, we have 60 days, within, within 60 days of the day we receive our certified values, this was July 25th, we would have till September 25th. If the district decides to pursue a voter-approved tax, tax ratification election, we have